All right, everyone. Welcome. Thursday, August 26, 2021. The planning board will hear this evening. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Shall move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Our first item is a continued public hearing. Stormwater permit, 16 Manhill Road. Assesses map, block portion of 27-7-9A. Applicant owner Susan Stone. Mr. Tanzi, you're on.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Greg Tanzi, the project engineer, and I'm representing the owner and applicant, Susan Stone, Susan and Chet Stone. Currently residing on Jericho Road here in town. As you can see, it's lot number, house number 16, Manhill Road. Perimeter of the lot has not changed. You can see it here highlighted in the yellow. Size of the house, it's the same house that was here the last time. This house has been reduced in size from the judge's first original filings. They're proposing a pavement that could be cooled. And you can see that in the blue. And in the blue out front, that is the driveway, the permeable pavement that we are proposing. What I'd like to do is just cycle through very briefly, get on the comments that Mr. Palmeri had presented, and show you what we have done, what we're planning on doing. Mr. Palmeri's first comment made reference to a strip grab of bankment that was up here along the northern property line of the buffer strip. We have, that was an extraneous information left over from a previous filing. So we have removed that, and we are preserving that buffer strip. The second comment that he talked about is he wanted additional test bits in the area of permeable pavement and the pavement stone for the patio, which we have provided. Mr. Palmeri had a concern about groundwater separation between the bottom of the permeable pavement, reservoir and seasonal high groundwater. So what I have done is I shortened the amount of permeable pavement to allow for a two-foot groundwater separation between its reservoir and seasonal high groundwater. The other concern Mr. Palmeri had was permeable pavement's proximity to the foundation. I put in an EDP wire to prevent any type of seepage from getting into the basement and found that it would be acceptable. He also spoke about the use of permeable pavement, the slope of that, and yet a concern that the slope of it was 5%. Well, when I reduce the amount of this permeable pavement, the maximum slope of this driveway, existing permeable pavement, is less than 5%. And the overall average of the driveway is considered less than 5%. I believe it's more than 4. It's considered less than 4%. I believe that was satisfying Mr. Palmeri's concern. I revised the hydrocathodol and with respect to the permeable pavement, and again, Mr. Palmeri found that it would be acceptable. He also wanted me to model a second design point, which I have done in the hydrocathodol He also had some concerns about erosion control. I revised that erosion control plan and I provided calculations for the capacity of sediment trap. That was his biggest concern. So as you can see, I enlarged the sediment trap, and I have put all erosion control barriers around the perimeter of the site, which he had requested that I do. He also requested that I broke the pot, break the pot, the O&amp;M's plan, so that it would be a standalone document that has been done. He also requested that I add some maintenance documentation controls to the driveway. And that's pretty much everything that Mr. Palmeri had. The board had also some questions and comments. There was three of them. One was with respect to grading over the property line, might be a better. The other was the buffer zone planting to protect the butter in the rear. And the last one, a request about documentation about effectiveness of the permeable pavement. The first two comments, I think it's pretty easy to see that I've provided post landscaping buffer, and that will probably finalize after the house gets built, so that the homeowner can get their own landscaper out there, pick and choose what plant will best serve at various vantage points and for optimizing sunlight. The other was the grading issue. We have contacted the owner of lot number 18, which is Mr. Farrell, and he has given us a grading easement, which you can see here in the drawing. What we'll do is we'll just grade right onto his property. And when he builds up this lot, he can just go right up against that grading and blend his grading into the proposed grading here, or say them some felt, and it will also prevent or won't trigger the need to impact the existing property line. That is all we look at, with respect to the existing, the approved septic design plan. We will, I did prepare a standalone document on the easement, and I showed needs and bounds in the area of that easement. Mr. Felice, if he needs to make any other paperwork or legal work, or if he can still and easily import it and register these, I'd be happy to give him a review. And lastly, the permeable pavement itself, it really is quite an area. I don't know if you got a chance to look at the document that I sent here, but there's a really good study done by the DEP, and...
Can I just interrupt a minute? We put it in your folders today. We did not send it to you because it came in very late today.
No.
Does the picture, the deep, the picture?
No, no. Well, I'll get to that in a moment.
Okay.
But this is, this is the document.
Oh, that we previously said, that previously said.
But they had some interesting facts. The thing that I liked about this study is it was done by the DEP, Mass DEP, and Mass EDM, and it verified that the age of this pavement was old. It was, it lasted at least 20 years, and it was not in an ideal situation in an area that is, had its very harsh dewfall cycles and winters. And it held up structurally very well. They also did test studies, and they found out that it had a very effective treatment level. It didn't cause erosion. It was next to Silver Beach, and Silver Beach had problems with ECOI, phosphorus, total suspended solids. There's plenty of beach closings. And afterwards, there's, I think there was only one tie that there was a beach closing, but that was from a different source other than the parking lot that we have. And they used a number of good materials and EMPs, one of which was the permeable pavement. They also used cobblestone pavements and other low-impact recharge structures that served to both recharge and filter stormwater. In this document, they also referenced other permeable paving types, and that, that type, one of which is, is this type, which you can see earlier today. I don't know if you're familiar with this product, but this is a concrete, it's a block, but it's not a solid block. It's got some hollow areas that they interlock, and they form this permeable grid. And you can set them on a solid crushed stone or compacted gravel base. You can infill them with mown and seed right through it, and the grass grows up in between it. This is a low income, a low-impact product, and it has a high permeability rate, and it's also an option that the owner was willing to go with. It basically does the same thing that the permeable pavement does. I think the permeable pavement has an advantage because it's got a sand filter to it, and the sand filter is a very highly effective way of filtering impurities, phosphorus, ECOI related issues here. But it, and the total suspended solids, it's very effective. The DEP credits it with an 80% TSS removal, and I think it's easier to maintain. But I just offer that to the board, and the applicant is willing to go with either product and one or the other. At this point, I just can't.
Karen. All right. So I'm sorry, Peter Palmeri wasn't able to come here tonight. I think Greg summarized Peter's comments from the letter that I sent out to you. He questioned the grading on the south side of the permeable paver driveway. He, the one-to-one riplap slope is gone. He's got a temporary grading easement on the other property. So you may want more information on the easement. They did some two, they did some soil testing. It would appear that one of the trenches along the front property line will be less than the required two-foot of separation to the seasonal high groundwater. Greg said they put the impervious barrier along the foundation wall. You know, he's, there's a couple of questions on the hydrocathodol calculations. He, he points out that 80% TSS is only if the permeable paver driver is properly maintained. He says that the calculation for the sediment trap is acceptable. I'm not, you know, and he still questions the use of the permeable pavement for the, for the residential use on a driveway of approximately 5%. We did get new plans today, but they were not talking about them tonight because they have not been reviewed. Your, what we're talking about tonight is the second set of plans that were submitted.
And the, just a question on, on Peter's comments. It appeared Mr. Tanzi tried to address these comments, and Peter has said he's okay with these, or?
No, Peter hasn't, Peter, this is, this is Peter's report that we just got this week.
Yep.
And Peter hasn't seen the new set of plans.
Okay. So we, it remains...
He's seen these plans, and that's what these comments are based on.
Right. So it remains, we're still waiting for Peter's review of the changes.
I haven't even sent him to Peter yet.
Okay.
He's on vacation this week, so he won't get them till, he won't get them till Monday.
And, oh, keep going, please.
No, he, he won't get them till Monday, when I send them to him, and I will inquire. They did provide additional funds, and I'll inquire if he has enough funding. I tried to guesstimate how much it would cost for an additional two reviews.
Okay.
All right. Are you all set, Karen?
Yeah.
All right, I'll open it up to the board for comment. Steve?
Just a few questions. I mean, I would like to hear back from Peter on, on what you've done, so, you know, we need to hear that. You indicated that you changed the length of something that changed the depth to groundwater. I'm not sure I quite understand that.
Yes. As you can see, this is the front property line, and the length of the permeable pavement used to extend to the property line. But there was a test pit here that indicated that the separation of groundwater in this area here was insufficient for, for the permeable pavement. So I put the permeable pavement back to this line, and this, this right here is the standard pavement right here, right here. So that does not require a separation of groundwater. Keep in mind, this driveway is sloping up, so the further you go back, the more fill is, it's on, which gives it its groundwater separation.
So where you drew the line?
Right here.
What's the groundwater separation there?
It's at least two feet, and I believe it's about two, two, two feet, three inches.
Okay, I guess I'll wait to hear from Peter on that one. You mentioned also, well, Peter mentioned in his comments that the, the way to clean this surface is to vacuum sweep it, use vacuum sweeping machines on a monthly basis? Is that, is that what we're still talking about as an O&amp;M requirement?
Well, that's what Peter felt that we would like to see happen.
Well, he's saying that's what it's necessary to keep it functional.
Yeah. They do mention that in the EMP's maintenance, but they don't specify that you need to do that for, for a driveway. But they also give you the option of blowing or power washing the surface. Driveways are probably the best use for permeable pavement because they're, they see minimal amount of traffic. People might drive over them several times a day, and that's about it. Going fast, they're not stopping on, they're probably, that would be a source of grinding sediments into the pavement. And plus, they're private, they're own, and the homeowner will keep the grounds clean just because he hopes, they want to keep their, it's their own house, and they want to keep it looking good, and they want to preserve the value of it. Right? It's, going off a driveway is not a difficult maintenance task that we would all do.
Well, I guess I'm focused on what he's suggesting is the right maintenance is vacuum sweeping machines. That's different than a blower. So, no, if he's, if he's, he thinks the, I think we should run that by him, Karen, if he thinks that there are mitigating circumstances here because it's a driveway, and that blowing or power washing is acceptable maintenance? Guess I'd like to hear from him on that. It sounds like he's still of the opinion that, you know, permeable pavement shouldn't be used in this application, given the slope of the driveway.
Yeah, and the slope of the driveway is, now, it is less than 5%. I pulled it back.
What's the slope?
At, at the max, it's about 4.9. Up at the top, it's lower, it's probably around 4 or 3.9.
So did you regrade this, so that...
No, I, I just pulled the permeable pavement back away from the property line. It's at that, that front property line where the driveway is at its steepest, and it's right there at, at 5%. Whereas, as you go back, the driveway, you know, it flattens out, it flattles as you enter into the driveway, uh, into, excuse me, into the garage, so that you have a nice flat landing spot, start of the garage.
So it's no slope in front of the garage?
Oh, there's a slope. You, you do have, you always have to have a slope. You wouldn't...
So what's that slope?
Yeah, I'd say it's probably about 3.9%. You'd want a little bit of a slope. You just don't, you don't want water coming back into the, into the garage.
And is this the kind of permeable pavement that they're using?
No, that is not proposed here. That's an alternative.
Is this an alternative that requires less maintenance?
You're just mowing, mowing, watering, seeded, sweep it up. I, I don't think it's as environmentally beneficial as, as the permeable pavement, but...
Because?
It's, because the permeable pavement has, basically it has a sand filter. It's made with bankrock gravel, and I've seen these, these bankrock gravels get installed. They're, they're, it's a very clean, very well-sorted, well-remained material that packs very well, but you pour water on it, it goes right through it like, I'm exaggerating when I say it goes through it like a sieve, but it perks very well. It's a very structural sound material. You can put bankrock gravel under the alternative as well. You know, there'll be some filtration with that as well, but you won't get the filtration that you'll get with permeable pavement.
Okay. One other question. The easement for the grading, why is it temporary?
It won't be needed once, as the adjacent lot gets built out. The adjacent lot will be filling right up against that impactor, and it'll actually level out, it'd be smooth, you know, uniform grade going across. It will drop down because the grade of the road slows down as you, as you go north on Manhill Road, but, but the gradient will be uniform across as well.
So does, is the intent that whoever comes by in the next lot is going to completely sort of regrade that there and fill it up?
Yes, going to fill it up. And there'll be some, there'll be some regrading there.
Will it affect the flow from the boundary of this property, of that property?
No.
Either velocity or volume?
No, there's a swell there on the, on the side.
So it won't have any impact on the stormwater calculations you've already done?
No, the runoff has been mitigated along that property line.
Ben?
Could you, could you talk a little bit about the, the design intent of this infiltration trench drain that kind of goes across the front of the yard and then...
Yes. Mr. Palmeri had concerns about runoff getting, going from the front lawn area onto the street. Originally, I, I had the, the front lawn graded so that when it rains, there's a slight slope over the septic system, and it would go forward, and at the toe of the slope, it would follow the, the natural grade and come across and be sent out back. Mr. Palmeri had concerns that it wouldn't, it wouldn't do that, that it could get out on the street. So it's a safe guy. What I've proposed is a 1 foot wide infiltration drain, right, right that grade, right at the toe of the slope, runoff, perforated four-inch pipe, will do that trench drain. And there's also a trench drain right here on the pavement, so any, any runoff from the pavement is picked up and it gets sent out back by a four-inch pipe. Now, the capacity of that four-inch, the flow that's going into that pipe in a 100 year storm is .018 CFS. It's a very small amount of runoff, and it's, it's clean. It's long and it's rooftop. I've got a detail of that. It's right here. You can see that it's, it's long and it's skinny. Runoff comes off the toe of the slope, it's picked up, and there's a, there's a perforated pipe. Most of that runoff is just going to infiltrate into the runoff. But on a heavy rainstorm, if this trench drain can't infiltrate all the water, it will be picked up by that perforated pipe within the trench and be sent back to the rear of the lot and down the buffer strip, down the lawn here. So it won't impact the street, or the butter.
Excuse me. I just have to do one thing. It's seven o'clock. I have to, we have a public hearing that was scheduled at seven that's being immediately continued, and then we will continue.
We just have to say that.
So just take a breath, and we'll be right with you.
Right with you. Hold on.
Okay.
Stay right there.
Stay right there. Where is it? I have it, it's here somewhere. Here we go. I move to immediately continue, um, with the public hearing for the stormwater permit and the public meeting for the site plan administrative review for common driveway at 533 Country Way due to unforeseen circumstances with public notification until September nine, 2021 at 7:30 PM and to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until October 29, 2021. Second?
Second?
All in favor? All right, you all said thank you. Excuse me. Okay, there you go.
So, I think I was just about done with my information as to what the purpose of how that, the function of that infiltration drain works.
All right. Ben, are you?
So, uh, I guess what proportion of water would you say is truly being infiltrated in that trench versus being drains to the rear of the property?
It would depend upon the storm.
In the hundred year storm?
A what?
In the hundred year storm.
In the, in the hundred year storm, the way I modeled it, I modeled it as though that there were no, um, infiltration occurring. And the reason why I did that is because if you recall, uh, this is an area that comments on that trench drain, um, groundwater separation. If you don't have two feet of groundwater separation, it can affect its infiltration ability. It impedes it. To be conservative, I modeled it so that no infiltration, um, will take place in that or, and the entirety of it will get sent back to the buffer strip. And that was that zero point one eight CFS, um, that I had mentioned earlier. I would, I would say, uh, I'd be surprised if it's less than fifteen percent of it would be infiltrated, um, on a regular basis.
But...
Or during a hundred year storm.
But in terms of the stormwater, uh, calculations, you're not receiving any credit under that anyways because you said...
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's more of a, a drain in essence?
Right.
So, I guess, could you explain a little bit more since we're going to be draining water from, from this front grade back now to the rear? What, what is the existing condition of that rear portion of the property and how might that water, that outfalls in that area behave?
Well, again, the, um, the zero point one eight CFS coming out, um, that's the peak flow during a hundred year storm. On a normal basis, it, it would be a, it would be a significant flow. It would come out and, you know, it, it puddle on the ground and it would, it would have a water course and depth, um, you know, I'd say five feet away from, well, and that pipe it would be very much the same as, uh, the depth of the runoff during a, half a piece of storm. You know, it would just go over the ground and it would just go on its natural course. The way it was modeled, uh, it accounted for that, that outflow was added to all the other things on and off the site, upgrading the site. And it was found to be, you know, I, kind of the, the peak flow and the volume was less than what was there, um, in the beginning. And the, uh, the difference between the pre and the post, for example, here in, what we call, that would be design point one, just, just as a, uh, a recap. For the two year storm, what's coming off there now is approximately two point two five CFS. It was two year storm. Post condition is two point zero six CFS, so it's, so it's less. In the ten year, the, the predevelopment is four point one six where it's three point eight four in the, in the post. And then in the hundred, you've got seven point two seven CFS in predevelopment and that gets knocked down to six point eight seven. So, it, there, there's a noticeable reduction, but the, but the flows aren't that, that significant anywhere, you know, for this lot. They're relatively low, but they have been mitigated. And, uh, and the same thing with the volumes. The volumes, you know, are, are, are very small. Point two oh two acre feet in the pre, in the two year versus point one eight nine, point three seven five in the pre for the ten, point three five two in the post, point six six three in the hundred, point six three zero in the post. So, they've all been, been mitigated. It's not, you know, the impact is not something that you really have to be concerned with. As long as the performance standard has been that, which it has, um, it should be good.
Sure. Um, yeah, I guess my only concern would be with this, the rear, this drain that's outfalling to the rear is that, you know, we're channelizing water and creating a conduit that's now emptying into a natural condition. We don't know how that might behave, so I just would want to make sure that that drain doesn't, i- is designed and built in a, in a manner that doesn't create a, a, a problem since we've heard ad nauseam about how it, the, the houses on that side are wet and they have a lot of water coming that way towards Christopher Lane.
Well, maybe, uh, maybe we should kick that over to Peter. I mean, does it need a level spreader or something?
Yeah.
You know?
My concern is it's going uphill and then downhill.
So, picks up velocity somewhere.
Somewhere along the line.
No, that's, that's...
Yeah, I mean, the hope, the hope would be that the water doesn't go into the first pipe and it stays in the drain.
This is the pipe, but the pipe is going uphill and then down.
So, it moves along.
Well, no, is that the elevation of it?
That's fifty eight up to...
No, the elevation of the pipe.
Is at...
The high point of the pipe is at the trench, correct?
Fifty eight and then it goes to fifty nine.
No, that's the contour, that's not the pipe. The pipe's going to be buried, right?
Yeah, the, the invert of the pipe is at fifty four fifteen.
Yep.
And right down gradient is five zero fifty four.
No, no, what's the, what's the high point of the pipe?
It's at fifty nine.
You mean that the...
Where it starts.
Fifty six, fifty six point four six?
Oh, that here, uh, yes, fifty six point...
Yeah, and this pipe is, is gravity flow, right?
Right.
So, it's, it's not going uphill and down now?
No, it's going, it's sloping downhill.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
But I think you probably do need to look into some type of whatever at the end of this pipe.
Um, I, I could put a level spreader in there.
Yeah, all right.
All right, Ben, maybe not?
Can I make an observation as a non-engineer of which I see at least six engineers sitting in this room right now? As we get more into this permeable, permeable pavement kind of stuff, how do we know that people who are buying houses are supposed to be vacuuming their driveways or power washing and... I feel like I need to be a, a, a civil engineer to, to buy a house now. I mean, so where at one point do we make sure that all of this stuff is, is being done? And, and who enforces it? I mean, that's so it doesn't fail, right? I mean, isn't that a...
Well, it's supposed to be in the O and M plan, right? And that plan is supposed to be provided to any...
And we hope that everybody reads it.
Potential homeowner, right?
That's it.
But, you know, I, I have a problem with it because once you buy something, it's yours. And yes, you want to maintain it, obviously, to make it work, but my goodness, some of the things that you have to do here...
Yeah, I, I, I'm not an engineer, yeah.
Yeah, are really around owners, but we can talk about that another time.
Another time, yeah.
So, it, the other thing... All right, um...
Mr. Palmeri?
Are you going to consider, according to Mr. Palmeri, increase the, um, the size of the stone for the stabilized construction entrance to two to three inches?
Uh, yes, I, I have devised that detail, but that was, that's not on this plan, that's on the...
All right, Ben?
Yeah, so we have to wait for him to come back.
Peter's review of the next plan, basically.
So, we're going to wait. We'll wait for the next reiteration.
Just out of curiosity, how many gallons per minute is point one eight CFS?
Point one eight, how many gallons?
Well, that's what you said, the, well, velocity coming out is, right?
Well, there's seven point four eight one gallons.
You don't have the immediate answer, so calculate it and tell us.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any public people here that would like to say something?
There are public people, but not for this one.
Yes, sir. Would you identify yourself, please?
My name's Alan Lawson over at twelve Manhill Road. At the last meeting, I asked a question, you know, those wondering, like, I don't get a response. So, my property, um, borders on this, I would say, on the left, exactly. And you were building up the elevation on that property. My question was last time, is this going to impede the normal flow of water from the top of Manhill across, across my property?
Um, no, actually, uh, I do remember that question and I, I did model and grade, um, a berm and a swale right along the, the property line so that any water that came from your, your lot to that lot will be going down to the back and go through the buffer strip.
That is detail eight on this drawing. Just trying to make sure I understand it.
The detail A would be sort of more like this swale and wind swale over here. This is more of a natural swale that's, that's created by the, by the grading, but...
It's not actually a swale, then?
You can, you, yeah. There, there are proposed five grades right along the, uh...
It just looks like you're pointing to a, a detail, detail eight on this, but there's no, no indication that it stops, though. I'm, I'm thinking this is along this gentleman's property all the way.
No, that, that detail, that's what I'm, that's the swale that's more... It's not a, 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 a uniform cross section. The, the grading is going to, is going to have a steeper grade than the natural slope coming off of the Wasserman property, but it will form a swale that's below the slope. And the problem that has that type of, uh, a radial swale and it can bathe the water down and around.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but this, this drawing says it's detail eight water quality grass swale.
Right.
And it shows the whole dimension, including a three foot wide swale. So, why does this note not apply?
It, it applies to this swale.
No, it's on the, on the other side.
On the other side.
The site, it has swale here.
What swale where? There's no delineation of a swale there.
Right, right next to the permeable pavement.
Where does it start and stop?
It starts at the edge of the fifty seven five four and stops after the fifty six point five five three.
How do we know that?
He doesn't tell us.
So, there is a swale on the...
It's right there, from there to there.
It's identified, I, it's identified.
This area, just that?
Apparently.
What good is that?
Yeah, I, I, I've got the proposed water quality swale, detail eight, two, four.
Right, that's the one I'm asking you about.
We want...
What is that, ten feet long? There's no way to tell on this drawing.
Uh, I can, I can extend that out also to one, right, seven swale.
Okay. All right.
This doesn't really respond to the question then, right? So, there's, there's this short little swale to kind of nowhere and then there's what is remaining along the property line? It's just a natural grade swale that, that, I, I don't understand it. Right, right on that.
Picture. Let, let's say this line is the, is the property line and the existing grade, this is the Wasserman line, this is a pro line. You know, the grade might, it, it slopes down like that, but the proposed grading here will come up, it'll go over, there's, there's a water quality swale that you see on, um, on detail eight and then right here would be a patio. And would this prevent any water from going onto the Wasserman property? Uh, it goes this way, it gets picked up by the swale and it's sent back to the buffer strip. Any water from the Wasserman property hits the toe of the slope and then there's a swale that, that I modeled that looks like this. It's not a uniform, uh, triangular section as I had mentioned before, but it's pronounced enough there to convey the water around. I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, it's not...
The concept of, of grading is tricky because you're, you're dealing with a three dimensional situation shown on a two dimensional sheet of paper. And, you know, it, it, it is, it is a, um, it can be a tricky concept, but we do have a, a swale here to prevent water from getting onto the Wasserman property. And there, there will be a, a swale that gets formed naturally by the grading that will prevent standing water from occurring on the Wasserman property and all bring it around that. And that's the same pattern that it's doing now with the exception when it's just flowing across the, the property rather than coming down in a, in a...
Okay. We'll have to wait, we'll see. All right, we will continue this then.
All right, before you read the motion, um, I took the liberty of, because not everyone got back to me, we're going to cancel the meeting on September twenty third and put in a meeting on September sixteenth because it seemed most people could make it on September fifteen, sixteenth if you responded. So, that's what, what this motion is going to say and I'm also going to say that the meeting on the sixteenth will be at the EOC.
Okay.
So, I mean, but that'll be on the agenda when it's posted, but I just wanted to, you know, say that before you read the continuance.
Thank you. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit for sixteen Manhill Road until September sixteenth, 2021 at 6:30 PM and to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until October eighth, 2021.
It opens.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
I have to go back to school.
Our next is a discussion, uh, vote for surety release for Morelwood. Karen?
Oh, I think the applicant should pay...
All right, who's the applicant? You?
Or the requester.
The requester?
The on behalf of the requester.
The requester.
On behalf of the requester.
Good evening. Steve Yorke?
Steve Yorke, for the record, representing Simoni Properties, who was the developer for the Laurelwood project. Most of you weren't around when that came in, I think it was around 1998.
I was on the cusp of that.
You're thinking about it, right? They had a condition in there in the approval that they posted $20,000 bond in case any damage was done to First Parish Road when they constructed the subdivision itself. And there still are a few things left to do in the subdivision, but it's basically cleanup work. The road's been in for, let me say, 698 or 9, something like that. And the town, in fact, went out and repaved First Parish Road a number of years ago, but we received a letter from DPW stating that there was no damage in First Parish Road. They have issues with tax implications, that they owe property taxes on this, and all we're trying to do tonight is to have a planning board vote to release the $20,000, but it's going to be held by the treasurer collector, and that's gonna be used to pay down the taxes so that we'll eventually be able to come forward with, there's two lots that are still working out there. That's basically it. I think also today, there was a condition in the original approval that they construct a, I guess, a walking trail or something, and if they didn't do that within the first year, they imposed a $10,000 bond for that as well. If they didn't construct that, then the town was able to take the $10,000 bond and use that for some conservation purpose or planning purpose. And I think today Karen will tell you, should we receive the letter from them, actually just verifying that the town can take the $10,000. I had a lawyer, it was the town accountant, that wanted verification rather than just taking the $10,000, but I promised her that I would do my best to get that letter, and they did show up today, so. That's basically it. And there still is, I think, $33,000 plus in another surety bond, so that we'll make sure that the cleanup work and stuff is done. I think there's way more than what they need for that part of it, so. I just request them on their behalf to that $20,000, basically make it to the town treasurer.
All right, so Laurelwood is an old subdivision. It's partly in Situate, partly in Norwell. The lower half of Norwell has been finished and completed, and Norwell has accepted the lower part of the road. That's where all the, that's where all the current residences are on. And so the town of Situate did have, did condition this $20,000, and it was to be released if there was no damage to First Parish Road at the completion of the project. I would, I would think that it's important, the back taxes have been owed on this property for years. There's like $55,000 plus in taxes that are owed, and this $20,000 would go towards helping pay off the back taxes. You don't have to release it now, but you can wait to the completion of the project. However, I recommend that the town get the money in the taxes. We do, there was also a modification in the Laurelwood project, and that's when the sidewalk was supposed to, there was supposed to be a trail from Laurelwood to Vernon Road. Well, it was never, was never done, never sought, and so the town accountant and the treasurer collector wanted a paper trail to, before we actually seized the $10,000, which we've been entitled to be take for over 20 years now. And there is still surety money to finish off the subdivision. The town ultimately would like to get this resolved, perhaps not accepted, but at least resolved. So I'm gonna recommend that I think you should vote to release the $20,000, but, you know, it's, I don't think it's always right that the town is being forced to act on everything first. I mean, they've been saying that they're gonna come in and pay this now for two months, and nothing's happened. But I do think that the town getting back tax money is a highly important issue.
All right, discussion?
Just a couple of questions. You said, wait until it's complete. When is that?
I don't know. That's why I'm recommending that. I think that you want your money now. We don't know when it's gonna be complete.
How long until it's complete? The last thing that we saw in the record, there was a one-page thing that had like four or five items on it, like, make sure the detention base is clean. There were some stones on one of the regaining walls on the side that came loose on the top. Those have already been fixed. So the association, which is actually really a Norwell association, I mean, that's, as you said, that's where the owners are presently. There's no Situate dwellings yet on the property. So they've kind of taken it upon themselves to do a few of these things, and I think they had been working with the developers well on some of this through the Norwell side, even though some of it was in Situate. Some of it had to do with adding a little bit of loom behind the berm. I think that might have been done 10 years ago.
So are these the things that remain, that we still have $33,000?
I haven't looked at the punch list, and the punch list was around 2007. I haven't looked at it because it hasn't been pertinent to what we're looking at, but there's items that left to be done. There's been issues, there were issues all along with the paving in Norwell, so I think that the punch list has to be reevaluated when, when the project comes forward to go to completion.
Are you sort of generally in agreement that $33,000 probably is gonna cover it?
I have no idea. It's, I mean, they thought so at the time, but it's been a long time since then, so I have no idea.
Because we're sort of taking money out of one pocket to put in another at this point, right? If we take the $20,000?
Right, but the $20,000 was specifically, the decision specifically says that it was for the work for fixing old Oak and Bucket Road.
You mean?
No, I mean, First Parish Road, in the event that there was damage.
Okay.
So it wasn't for, they were specific pockets of money, and so, you know, it may, this project may never...
So we're comfortable that that's been resolved, then, the First Parish Road?
DPW has indicated to you there was no damage. They repaved over the road, so you wouldn't be able to find the damage anyway. So, I mean, it's kind of...
It's a moot point.
A moot point.
Second question. Does money go straight from the town to the town? Doesn't pass anybody else's?
Doesn't pass, it's anybody else's hands.
Anybody else?
No.
All right. I move that the board release the $20,000 plus accumulated interest cash surety being held per condition 21 of the Laurelwood Drive definitive subdivision approval to cover the costs of damage to First Parish Road resulting from trucks and heavy equipment as the town of Situate DPW has inspected the road and found no damage. The funds released shall be immediately transferred to the town to cover outstanding taxes. The board determines it is more beneficial for the town to receive back taxes of over $55,000, this $20,000 plus an outstanding balance that is unpaid, than to keep this money until completion of the subdivision. Second?
Second. Just a question. Says the funds are released, release shall be immediately transferred?
Yes.
When the funds are released?
So she...
Are they actually released to the town? Are they released to the developer?
No, they're released to the town. It's in a, it's in a surety account that the town treasurer collector controls. She'll take the money and apply it to the taxes.
Okay, so can we just modify that to say the funds released to the town shall be immediately transferred to the treasurer? Yeah. Okay.
To the town treasurer.
To the town.
It says transfer to the town.
No, it says here, right? The funds released to the town.
All right. Shall be immediately transferred to the town?
Yes.
Yes.
To cover outstanding taxes. All right, is there a second as amended? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's done. All right, what about the $10,000, Karen? Where are we gonna put that?
We don't need a vote on that.
All right.
That's gonna go in your restricted account. We're gonna move it over, it'll be an internal accounting transfer to your restricted account, which we are talking about in a few items down.
Okay, excellent. All right.
Payday for the town.
Oh, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, we now have a discussion on a pool, five Cole Brook Circle and Errol Fegone. You'll identify yourselves, please.
So my name's Errol Fegone. This is my wife, Sarah Fegone.
Hi.
All right, if you'll tell us what's...
Yeah, I just kind of wrote a little note here. So we wanted to thank you for giving us some of your time tonight. We decided to move to Situate about a year and a half ago. We moved from an hour away because we fell in love with the town, and we wanted to raise our four children here. As you know, we purchased a lot in Curtis Estates, and unfortunately, that process has made us question whether or not this really was the best decision. Most of it is behind us at this point, but we are here tonight to discuss our possibility of putting in a pool. As you saw in the sheet provided, these homes were actually marketed to us from the beginning as allowing pools. We had many conversations with our builder about a specific lot to accommodate a pool, and initially, we were under the impression that we would be closing last fall and putting in a pool by this past spring. We even met with multiple pool companies to line things up. We never would have purchased this home if we knew that there were gonna be any of these issues that we've come into. And you can imagine what our frustration was when we still hadn't closed in May and also started learning about all these pervious issues that we were never discussed and even found out that we didn't have enough space for a driveway for our house. It is obviously clear to us at this point that we were misled about our option for a pool being easy among many, many other things that we've been misled or were left incomplete, which is the same scenario for, unfortunately, many people in our neighborhood. We do, however, understand why limitations, these limitations exist, and runoff and stormwater are important, especially in a town like Situate. But we just wanted to come before you today to please ask if there's any way that these limitations, that we could be able to put, like, a small pool in our backyard. We are by no means trying to go around any rules. We are willing to do stormwater, drainage, whatever. We've discussed it with some engineers and some landscape design companies. We're not trying to cause problems. We're simply just trying to make the dream home for our family that we were promised. And unfortunately for us and many others in this neighborhood, this has been a much more difficult task than we anticipated. We appreciate any guidance that you have to proceed with the process.
I appreciate you coming in, and I know how difficult this is for you and how frustrated you are. And it's actually not fair. And so I understand exactly where you're coming from. So I'll open it up to the board. Patty, do you have anything else?
Not right now.
Not right now? Ben?
I guess, I, this, this project was, like, they, it was really pushed, they really pushed the envelope in terms of the site design, obviously, and that's why there are conditions that you can't really make any substantive changes to the, to the stormwater, and by adding more impervious surface, you would thereby be doing that. So I guess, I don't feel comfortable answering this unless I know, like, what an engineer, the design engineer has to say about it. Like, would adding a pool substantively change the function of the stormwater system? And could it be mitigated? And that, that's the only way, like, it's almost a technicality, like, philosophically, I think you guys should be able to build a pool, but from an engineering and permitting perspective, I, I don't, I personally can't answer that until I know, you know, what the math shows.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, the condition allows for the opportunity to demonstrate that. So you should be able to, you know, get, get an engineer or whatever to help you demonstrate that, and demonstrate that you can mitigate it. I don't know, I'm like Ben, I don't know the answer to that. We're not stormwater designers or anything, so.
So, like, the reason why we're here now, before we even got that far, is we've already started that process.
Mm-hmm.
And we preached out to an engineer, a site designer, and they told us that they kind of, they didn't want to waste our money. The town was pretty clear, they want absolute unimpressed. So that's when they've not suggested, you should go to the town and find out, because, like, they essentially didn't want to touch it, because they said that the town...
Yeah. I hear what you're saying, and if you've, the special permit that, or the permit that created this has a condition in it, right, that indicated that if somebody wanted a pool, then we would have to see, see a modification and mitigation.
Best the O and M.
The O and M, yeah.
Best the O and M has that condition.
Right, but that O and M was part of the overall permit, right?
We don't have your O and M. We just got it for the first time. We've never heard anything about it.
I would say at a high level, I apologize for the ineptitude of the developer.
Even our builders, so we went through the whole thing with our driveway. We had to add pervious pavers to our driveway. A lot of people, like, our walkways pervious pavers, a lot of other company people have to have the pervious pavers, and we were all told, like, don't worry about it, it's our problem, there's nothing you have to do afterwards. And now, like, reading the O and M, it's like, we have to be recertified every year, there's this crazy maintenance on it, which we're more than willing to do, like, it's just...
We're just blindsided by the whole thing.
Like, I can't even put a shit in it.
Again, you know, I, you know, I feel for you because I think you got led down the path.
We're just looking for an opportunity to present a mitigation plan, really, that's all.
I would be open to that. I mean, I think, I think Ben's saying the same thing, is that, basically, it's, somebody's gotta do the work, right? And if they can figure out a way to do it...
And you deserve that, you deserve the...
We just feel like, we're like the bad guys in this scenario. And all we do is buy a house, and now we can't do anything.
We can't, the house with the pool, we have four kids who, like, absolutely loved it. We weren't even, any house that couldn't have a pool or didn't already have a pool wasn't even on our radar. It was 100%, but like, we can't move them now, again. We just moved here four months ago, is when we found out about this issue, like, when we closed. It's frustrating.
It's more than frustrating.
So, I mean, have you had conversations with the developer? What has he had, okay, you can tell us, we know who he is.
You're done with him.
You're done with him, okay.
It's just, we don't get any truth.
The engineer is saying, hey, talk to the town before I even talk to you.
Yeah, we talked to engineers originally with the whole driveway thing, because we were like, what, like, what the heck's going on here? And we got nothing from the builder, so we got no information.
I preached out to the builder many times, just to try to get things on the punch list done. It's been four months, they haven't come back.
So we're done with that, we're just moved on, and...
I'm not, I'm not gonna keep chasing.
Yeah, the engineer said, like, there's plenty of things that you can do. There's, you know, there's definitely options, like, that we, we could, like, look into. But then, when we actually put down, like, the deposit and everything, they were kind of like, I don't know, I'm getting a different message, so I don't want to waste your money.
Well, I feel like it's the O and M plan where it has this qualification, but that's all part of the approval, right?
Right, because the, the design plans actually show the maximum impervious surface on every lot, and that's clearly shown on the design plans.
Right.
And then we came across the fact that they built the houses too big, you know, and they didn't allow for walkways.
Yeah.
And sometimes they didn't even allow for enough impervious area for the driveway. And so you conceded to let them use permeable pavers for, for the walkways, because you're doing that on a couple other jobs as well, and, you know, so then you said you really, you wanted to put them to put something in the O and M plan so that the people who are buying into this would know.
Yeah.
And it's really unfortunate.
It's assuming they actually get the O and M plan.
I gave it to them, they didn't get it from the developer.
Completely insane.
Which, I mean, you know, the email I have says, oh yeah, we need to get this resolved so we can get that to the homeowners. Well, obviously, it wasn't gotten to the homeowners.
That was actually another question that we had, like, so when we found out about this whole thing, like, our, our number is, whatever, 20.7 or something, but like, the residential zoning for where we are is 25. So how does that, like, reconcile? Like, there are some lots in our neighborhood that are 28 based off the plans. Like, the residential zoning for our lot, now that we own it, isn't it 25%? So how does that get reconciled?
This was part of a flexible, open space subdivision. And so they accounted for the permeable pavement in the whole drainage design... And so they accounted for the permeable pavement in the whole drainage design because of the amount of stormwater basins that there were. And so that's what it's all based on. You know, that's why your lot sizes are a little bit... Your lot sizes are a little bit smaller, a little bit unique than the rest of the zoning because it's part of this flexible open space. All the land on the outside is part of open space that now is managed by the Conservation Commission.
So we're forever tied to this...
20.78 or whatever it is.
20.7% of allowable impervious?
You're tied to the maximum number on the plan, which it was... That's why I asked for all that information to be put on the as-built plan so that when people came in to see their as-built...
Yeah, the problem is that we bought the house over a year ago and none of this was ever disclosed to us.
No, and I...
Raise your hand if you're surprised.
I'm just shugging.
Like you saw the sheet. They had that out at the open house when we came to look at the model house.
It was a pool sheet where they literally said one of the houses...
I'd like to know where this came from.
One of the houses even goes as far as saying, "Yes, it's..."
Like certain sizes of pools.
Yeah, that one in particular sort of worried me because...
Like where did this come from?
If half the properties...
Yeah, and one of the other... Some of the people did do diligence. One of our neighbors reached out to the Conservation Committee because they thought that was the only concern because they also saw this. It's like they could do a pool. They worry about the Conservation Committee. And he forwarded me the email from them who said, "Yeah, you're fine for a pool." As far as they're in the Conservation Committee. Because they were just worried about the wetlands and that.
Yep. Everybody has their own little belly that they worry about, yep.
Well, I would say, I for one would be willing to, you know, entertain. If you can figure out a way to manage it, I would be willing to entertain it. But we kind of need to see the numbers, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, fully understand that. I just wanted... I didn't want to, you know, based on the recommendation of the engineer and the landscape.
Right, you don't want to spend the money if you didn't think it was going to happen.
It was a hard... Absolutely not, which is what they were...
We are elected. We're supposed to help people.
Right.
That's what we're here for. We are elected people to help you see what you want to have done. But like everybody says, this is kind of like a pie in the sky. We don't have any numbers to work with.
So get some numbers. Get someone to figure it out for you. Hire an attorney.
A lot of us are...
Yeah.
I mean, I really think you should.
Yeah.
And you should just be aware too that this is an active subdivision. Okay, so the planning board is still holding surety and things just are not done. So, you know, you want to keep an eye on our agendas for when stuff comes up.
They come before us a lot. Yeah, so you need to pay...
We are not happy with them, which would be a complete understatement.
I mean, there isn't a homeowner that is...
Unfortunate.
And it is unfortunate. So it's... Do what you can. We are more than happy to listen to you whenever, all right? So...
Yeah, we really appreciate that. Like what we said and many other people in the neighborhood, like we're willing to do what like whatever has to be done, but...
I think the challenge is if you think about your lot with everybody else's lot. If you change the stormwater flow, it potentially changes what's going to other people's lots. And there are, you know, kind of regulations around how that happens, right? So that's what the engineer has to figure out is how they manage that. And that's really what a lot of what we're looking at when we're looking at stormwater management.
I was back up to the house like at the backyard.
Like that it flows everywhere else.
Right, well, we have an issue with Towns and Road and that's been flooding since the beginning of time.
Since Jesus was a child.
So, and I have wanted the developers, we have wanted the developers to figure out where all that water is coming from. We think the detention basin in the back is working properly, but I think it's sheeting off of... Because there's a hill, it's coming off that hill. And when it rains, we get a lot of rain like it did last week, there's a pipe on somebody, by somebody's driveway. It looks like somebody opened a fire hose. That's how much water comes out of there. So there are issues and I think we will work with you.
We don't want to add to those issues. That's why like we'll do whatever we need to do to contain it to our property.
That's fine. But you talk to whomever and figure out how to go forward. And maybe collectively with the others that are looking to do what you want to do. There's a safety in numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if there are others there trying to go through the same thing, it makes sense for them to sort of all think about it at the same time.
Or you just join the KFC pool and be done with it.
We did that this summer.
And I bet you enjoyed it in there.
Yeah.
And you know what? It's less expensive than putting in a pool. So...
We'll come back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Company telling us. Thank you.
Okay, now we have an immediate continuance of an accessory dwelling.
Oh, are we here?
Huh?
We're here.
No, we're not. Yes, we are. No, but it's 7:45.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
All right.
Hey, I have to do what I know.
I move to continue the public hearing for an accessory dwelling, special permit at 137 Gilson Road due to unforeseen circumstances and public notification until September 9, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And to continue the time for action for filing with the town for until September 28, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next we have... We can put up the traffic pedestrian thing, can't we? Or do we want to do Mr. Burwick?
Traffic pedestrians can take that?
All right, then we'll do that. This vote on the use of restricted green bush traffic pedestrian, planning board funds to be used for sidewalk on Old Country Way. I think you were all notified of that. And the planning board has... Planner has agreed. The town administrator has agreed. DPW has agreed. Who else has agreed?
Director of Planning and Development.
Uh, yes.
So I sent you all those emails, you know? So everyone who is supposed to agree to it, I mean, with the planning board having a vote tonight, you know, the... We totally collected $60,000 from the Drew Company. And the idea was all along that it would be used for the sidewalk for Old Country Way. So that would leave... That would leave $64,000 in our, you know, restricted account. And so I think it's...
Plus another 10, right?
Yeah. Plus we're going to put another 10 in. So I think that, you know, I've... I sent you the paperwork that I've been given on it so far. And I think that it makes sense for... To use the money for this.
It's okay with me.
That makes that whole connection, right?
Yes.
If it's not that, then what?
If it's in the right place...
We got a Bermuda for...
In the right place, then it sounds good to me. How did they end up doing, deciding to do the project and run out of money though?
Well, they didn't. They took the money out of DPW.
They took the money out of... They kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul type thing.
It did run out of money, right?
Yeah, they did. They were getting... They got a $400,000 complete street grant.
Yeah.
And then, you know, then just, you know...
Continued.
Continued. And, you know, they ran out of money and but, you know...
I move that the board release up to $46,000 being held in a restricted account for the completion of the sidewalk at Country Way slash Old Country Way. The funds were collected per condition 43 of the special permit for the residents at Drifway Place to be used for traffic pedestrian improvements in Green Bush. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Notice that they're putting in the sidewalk on in vinyl today.
Yeah, they started that to the school.
Yeah, they started that. That's the one that was required as part of the project.
Yeah.
So what they... They ripped up the curbing in the sidewalk last week. The new curbing was supposed to arrive today. So they hope to have binder down by the end of next week.
Boy, did they wait till the last gun was fired?
Sometimes it's been hard getting...
Getting stuff.
Stuff. You know, we can talk about that. I mean, they were supposed to do some stone wall repairs, but why don't I do that as my update?
Okay.
Is this supposed to be done before school starts?
Um, yeah, we don't want the...
The children are...
Yeah, we don't want the sidewalk impaired while kids walk to school there. They were told that, but...
September 8th is the first day of school.
Sometimes you can't control the delay in the materials. But yeah, it's going to be a problem when the kids try to get to school.
Okay. All right. Mr. Burwick, your turn. If you'll introduce yourself and explain to us what's going on.
Bob Burwick, RJB Development. I'm here tonight for you to review some changes that were made. The original plans that were approved by the planning board. They were incorporated into the final plans. April 14th, 2020 architectural plans, which are the final stamped plans we'll be submitting to the permit... For permitting are the same plans that were submitted to the planning board on October 20th, 2020, which relocated the commercial office space from the left end position to the center of the structure.
This is the original.
Public hearing was held on December 10th, 2020. The plans were approved at that hearing and the modification was filed on December 14th, 2020. There were however, other design changes on those plans that were not mentioned at that time. Reviewing those plans recently in preparation for our pre-construction meeting, the town planner recognized those changes and has enumerated them in an email dated August 18th, 2021 to myself, the board's chairperson, and the building commissioner. As outlined in that email, the changes consist of four items or four items were enumerated of concern. One was on the southwest elevation, the cornice does not go entirely across the front of the building. On the northwest elevation does not have balconies. The northwest facade has less windows and the bathrooms were moved internally. And number four questions, if the stairs were up to code. Regarding the code compliance, I have communicated with the building commissioner and obtained a stairway code compliant design detail from the registered architect and will be forwarding that to the building commissioner for his review. And I have a copy of that with me if you wish to see that document. Regarding the window changes, there were previously 82 windows. There are now 80, two less. But the window sizes on the third floor are slightly larger, increased to match the size of the second floor windows. So there is actually more penetration. And if the board would like, I'd be happy to elaborate on the design changes regarding the balconies and the cornice. Regarding the cornice line, we brought the shed dormer forward with the front face of the building to increase the interior floor space. There are still well-defined cornices running between the dormers, giving it good definition and a cleaner frontal look. Regarding the removal of the balconies, we have learned from previous developments in scaled-down square footage living, buyers are still looking for more interior open space, master bedrooms with walk-in closets and large bathrooms. We ultimately decided that a third floor balcony was a flawed design for the following reasons. A small balcony on the third floor was too remote and would get little use and seasonal, seasonal at best. It had no significant vistas. It was not really appropriate to the neighborhood. Could not be used for grilling by code. And from an exterior architectural vantage point, the balconies could only be seen by several backyards, from several backyards. So staying inside the original footprint, the space would be better served incorporated into the interior space. And that's why we changed it.
Well, I asked Mr. Burwick to come in. Per condition 18, the final building plans stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the planning department for review for consistency with elevations and renderings described in condition 1. If the plans appear inconsistent, approval by the planning board will be required. I didn't... I mean, we understand that some of the changes were approved with the office, but I... As I'm not an architect, I sat down with the building commissioner who is a registered architect and we went through the plans. And that's when he identified, you know, the cornice on the front and, you know, the balconies and some windows. So I thought it would be just best if Mr. Burwick came in here and described his changes and see what the board... How the board... If the board thought that this was all right, if it rises to the level of a field change or a modification.
Well, I'm not prepared to speak to the stairway issue. I guess I would need to know what the result is on the code compliance.
Right, well, Bob Vogel just said, you know, just make sure that that has to be code compliant. And so I just raised that to Mr. Burwick. That's... I mean, that's not... That's not a major issue that I think impacts you as the planning board, but...
Doesn't change the design of the stairway?
No.
No, it does not. Bob just wanted to make sure that everything is going to be code compliant.
Okay.
So that doesn't change... That doesn't change the exterior...
Or the interior.
Or the interior, really.
And again, I have that detail with me if the board wanted to look at it.
Ian, can I ask why we sent Ford Poyce to design review? Were we not sending this project?
This is... This went to a design review.
Okay, that's... Okay.
It did. It went to design review during the whole process.
Totally forgot, sorry.
All right. Do we want to have design review just take a look at this? Yeah, I think it is... I mean, looking at the back of this, there's just no...
Which plan are you looking at?
This is... All right.
Yeah, that's the one that...
That's the back?
That's the back.
All right, and the front is...
Are there any changes on that elevation?
I have a copy of the original printed, hard copy.
I have the original print.
Right here.
There was more... It's like there was more relief on the roofs. Am I looking at that right? Hard to tell. No, no, they still have it. They just kind of shade, white shade, so it's hard to read.
Yeah, this is the 1129.
Yeah. We have it... It was in the materials I sent to the board.
Yes. Current.
It's just a current one, okay.
And that's what you have right there.
Notice this is the 1118, 1129, 18.
Okay.
It's the original plan.
Original.
And that's the northwest. That's southeast we're looking at. You're holding up northwest, but she's got southeast up there. I think the balconies were on the northwest.
Wait, so you want to go to the front or the back?
That's the front.
This is the front. But there were changes on the front.
Yeah. There weren't any changes here, were there? Or are there?
So we put the changes, this cornice went all the way across.
Yeah.
I can't see it. Can you hold up your?
Now, you can see they brought between the dormers. Because the dormers were brought forward.
Okay.
Another. Front porch. Oh, maybe.
Yeah, we didn't think that the front, Bob and I didn't think, Bob Vogel, I didn't think the front porch was asking anything for the effort because we did take it to account that the office changed to the middle.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
And so the doors shifted, didn't, didn't all the down chairs matter?
Okay. All right. Okay.
But what I saw on the front was the cornice, and I saw above the windows. There isn't this, um, thing above the windows that was, um, that's on the second floor. It's on the original.
And why did we remove the cornice?
Because we brought the, we brought the dormer forward.
Okay.
It's now a straight-up flat face.
Okay.
All right, this look better.
That look better?
I think so. I've got more relief to it.
Your first rendition looked better.
This is just expediency to get maximum square foot, right?
Yeah, right?
Okay, can we see the back? So that's the original back right there.
And then what did you do here? Okay.
So that looks-
So this is the northwest.
Two on the right are combined under a single dormer, right, whereas they have individual dormers here. Or individual shed roofs, I mean.
Yeah.
That looks pretty much the same.
No, they added, connected two of them across.
These are connected.
Okay.
And they had the front four.
I'm sorry.
It's just so flat-looking. Do we get one side?
Right here.
Other side.
Yeah. See it there? So-
All right, what does the board think?
This piece is gone. These were set back a little bit. And then he's got two of these connected all the way across with a shed roof.
What do I think?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I don't think it's a huge change. I think if you want a little more room inside, it makes sense. I mean-
I think we should send it back to the design review committee.
Yeah, I mean, I-
I, I agree it's not a big change, but it has a material visual impact on the outside. And, I mean, we, we got their input on the original design, so I feel like we should get their input on these changes.
I tweeted for, for questions, sent them back several times yesterday.
So. We're gonna send you back to design review. And have them-
Will you?
Yes, please. Okay, that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
So, wait, let's clarify this. So after he goes back to design review, you want him to come back here?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly what you want.
We want, um-
We want a report from design review.
Right, and then have him back?
I mean, if they can figure out a, you know, can figure out a compromise that works or whatever, or if they're, if they look at it and they're buying with the changes, whatever it is, I just feel like we need to give them the opportunity to review it.
Right.
And then come back to us.
Okay.
One, uh, one thing, Karen, I can't remember. It's only more, less architecture-related, but might end up being something, um, did this project, the stormwater was kind of tight, right? And I think that Greg Morse was Morse engineer for this.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think all the roof runoff went to downspouts that went to dry wells.
As far as I know, nothing's changing on that.
Well, well, one thing, because there is the gutter design, where you redo the cornices and move the sheds for, the shed dormers forward with the flat face, is just to consider where those downspouts are gonna, how you're gonna arrange the downspouts and, and make sure that they still get tight into the stormwater as designed.
Good point.
That's just how I think of my job, so.
Good.
Did, did they do something with it?
No, we haven't been provided that. I don't think it was on the site plan either. I'm not sure it was on the site plan. So Bob, you'll have to ask Greg about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you when we see you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Meeting dates in November.
Yeah, please.
In November?
Yep. And December.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we like pointing it out. It's gonna be light. That's all he wanted.
Right.
It's too industrial.
It's not quite as bad as CVS, but-
Close. Okay, um, meeting days, Karen, for, um, November and December?
All right, so I heard from some of you, and what we're going to do is we're gonna change, September, we go to September sixteenth from the twenty-third, so we still have two meetings. October, we go to October fourteenth. October twenty-sixth is town meeting, and we'll potentially have a meeting October twenty-eighth, too. November, it's November fourth and November eighteenth. So one and three versus two and four. The eighteenth will be at the EOC, too. Because that's a typical ZVA night in here. December, we have December ninth and, excuse me, we're hoping to not do December twenty-third.
You can't have a Christmas party? Get out of here.
Well, we're gonna, we're-
I'll be busy that day.
You'll be busy? You'll bring all our wrapping in, get, we'll do it all together.
But we're gonna play it by air.
Have a winter swim.
The first meet, the first meeting in January is January thirteenth and then January twenty-seventh.
January thirteenth and twenty-seventh?
And twenty-seventh.
So we don't have January thirteenth?
It becomes very tight very quickly in terms of scheduling for town meeting, et cetera.
Okay.
So that's what, you know, those of you who entered, that's what we came up with. And, um, I think that's probably the best scenario for the whole, for the whole thing.
Okay. All right. Minutes. You. I move to approve the minute, meeting minutes for August twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And accounting?
I move to approve the requisition of three hundred twenty-two dollars to Weston Graphics for printing abzonia maps, for sixty-eight dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for peer review services at eighteen Ford Place, for four hundred fifty-eight dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for peer review services at forty-eight dash forty, excuse me, forty-eight dash fifty-two New Driftway slash Gas Backwards, for five hundred twenty-nine dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for peer review services for four eighty-five Country Way slash Residential Compound, for three thousand and fifteen dollars, forty-five cents to Great Quality General Contracting LLC for return of stormwater bond for, return of stormwater bond for forty-two Otis Place, for four hundred and fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for peer review at Curtis Estates, nine ninety and, and by order. And by order.
Second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Play us on reports. Is anybody can play us on it?
Watching them?
Nope.
Oh, watching them.
You went to the selectman's meeting the other night?
Yes, I did. And, um, Mr. Maravito wanted to, the piece of property that we formulated here on three A, wanted to connect it, four units, the duplex and two houses, to sewer which runs up the private road to the high school. Okay? And the selectman voted four to zero, Tony wasn't there, not to allow him to do it. And I have to tell you, I was very pleased. Because it, it, it just flies in the face of, it's one thing for an emergency and, but not for something like this. And of course, Paul was saying that, well, you know, it's possible that a, a septic system had failed within a year.
What?
You know, how's your license these days?
You mean a new, a new septic?
A new septic system.
Okay.
Please.
In a year?
Huh?
In a year?
In a year.
So it could still be under warranty, then?
Yeah.
Oh, your license is on the line. And so there was that, and what else? Oh, I talked with Mara Corin. The seven New Driftway went to the housing trust. They want to build, four affordable units rather than in seven New Driftway. They want to build them off-site. So they were looking at the property on Stockbridge Road, which is in the A two residential, to put in a duplex. Actually, they wanted to put in two duplexes, but you can't because of the ramifications of zoning and you can only put in two. And then this talk, there was talk of the senior center that's down on Brook Street of, maybe that could be two duplex, could be a duplex. So now you have your four off-site. But because the applicant is saying that he cannot make sufficient, cannot make a profit by having the affordable units in the main structure. And I think, I think part of it is that he could, the trust might give him the land on Stockbridge for a dollar. And then they would construct the duplex. And maybe that could be set for the senior center. But the spirit of town meeting years ago was put that money toward the senior center, the new one.
You have to sell that in order to pay for this one.
Right. So, anyway, that's, um, what I know.
And so an update on seven New Driftway is I anticipate they will be filing any day now. Um, this one also has an issue with back taxes. They paid forty thousand of the approximately seventy-three thousand that they owe. And the understanding is that we'll stamp it in when it comes in, we'll put it out for peer review, but we will not open a public hearing until all the taxes are paid. And so they understand this timeline, et cetera. But we're getting multiple calls this week on it, you know, is the fee really this, is the fee that, you know, so I think they're close to filing.
That would include these off-site affordable housing units?
Well, their propose, I, we haven't seen what their application is, but we know that they need, based on the density, they need four affordable units. I mean, as last, as last time I calculated. Um, and so, you know, you, I also directed them to look at the meeting minutes from the informal discussion we had when we had them in here and, you know, I don't think you are overwhelmingly in support of having the affordable units off-site. So it's a wait-and-see type thing. We'll see what we get and you'll be, you'll be, when it gets filed, you'll, I'll let you know. You'll look at it then, but then we will not entertain a public hearing until the back taxes are paid.
Did they mow the grass?
I don't know.
No, well, as a guess, it's still-
I asked for it to be mowed.
I went to the-
The town did the right-of-way and around the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
There's a strip.
Yeah, that's mowed or all.
I will ask again tomorrow.
That as a second condition before?
Yes.
Must mow.
Must mow.
I'll ask again tomorrow on the mowing. All right. Okay.
Get a goat.
So, well, well-
Rent some goats.
I can, I'll send another email. What could I, what else could I do?
That's all.
Um-
Okay, what else?
I don't have a lawnmower anymore. So I see they got a, um, auction of your fire station finally.
Yes.
That'll be interesting.
I'd say it goes, we should have a pool to see how much it goes for. Somebody said one fifty. Somebody else said three fifty. Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand. I say it's gonna go for a million. This is the mine, it's, no, this is the mine at Fire Station.
Oh, this is mine.
Yes, and plus the fact it's on sewer.
Sewer, yeah.
Brick building right there? Huh? The brick building right there, right on the pond? Yeah.
Yeah, I, they could have done so many things with that. It's very cool, yeah.
Oh, well.
Let's see what happens.
Yes.
Give it twenty years.
It'll be underwater.
All right, so I still have several items for you. Um, so we were talking about the sidewalk on Curtis Estates. Well, we, we, as all you have noticed, that stones are falling out of the wall.
When you said that, what happened?
When,
Yeah.
when I went to the pre-con, I said, stones are falling out of the wall. This really needs to be addressed prior to the final coat going on the sidewalk because we don't want the sidewalk being ruined by repair to the stone wall. I was told that they were gonna come in and ask for a modification of the stone wall because in one place, the stone wall is too close to the tree and the tree is pushing the stones out. But I haven't seen anything and I, I've sent more than one email. So I don't know if, if they ruin the wa, if they ruin the walkway after it's done, they'll be fixing the walkway.
Okay.
Um, I will be sending you some stuff tomorrow for the next meeting because the next meeting, because of the SNAFU and the legal advertising, next meeting gets to be pretty hefty.
Which one is that?
The ninth.
The ninth. We have a-
Sleeping bed.
We have an accessory dwelling. Then we have your citizens petition for marijuana establishments. And then we have, um, five thirty-three Country Way. So I will send you what I have on so far for the citizen petition. Um, I've asked town, I've asked town council for a memo of the implications of it. And town council will be present at our hearing as well. I think I'll also ask Curtis Estates for proof the bond is being paid. Think I'll ask that. The board should think about if we want any items on the capital plan associated with the master plan. Um, capital item is something that costs more than twenty-five thousand dollars and lasts for more than five years. Capital requests are due by September twenty-fourth. So if you wanna think about that, we can, you know, you know, just let me know. Um, but, you know, we were gonna have a discussion about, you know, how to implement the master plan and capital and stuff.
Are consultants covered under capital?
The what?
Are consultants covered under capital here, or is that operational?
No, consultants wouldn't be capital because it's not-
Operating expense.
It's, right, it doesn't last more than, you know.
Ten minutes and then put on a show.
Well, some of them take that long.
Hopefully it would, but it could.
So if you think of something, email me and, you know, we can have a discussion. Because just implementation of the master plan has to start being-
Implemented.
Implemented.
Yes.
Um, as I think I emailed some of you- Um, as I think I emailed some of you, there is no policy change on looped water lines.
I know, isn't that something?
Um, so, I'm just, you know.
Why, why did they approve the other one?
Why, I.
They have an explanation for that?
Vacation.
Um, I, you know, I, somebody, the assistant water superintendent went out, said they didn't need a looped water line, and said, you know, and that's how it got started.
Assistant, right?
Yes, and, but now it's been made clear to everybody that there is, there is no change in the policy, and any changes happen that do come on this are discussed during the permitting process, and they're on a case-by-case basis. So, if any of you want to individually go and talk to Kevin Cafferty, you're more than welcome, but he maintains there is no change in the policy.
Okay. So are we looping or not looping? Looping, we have to loop.
You have to loop everything. Except this project that we just approved, they don't have to.
Yeah, except this one.
How fortuitous was that?
There was a temporary lapse in policy during the week that they wanted to dig their trench.
Right, and they, and the others were on vacation.
Very fortuitous. Serendipitous synchronicity.
Yeah.
Cut nobody anymore breaks.
Seriously.
Um, so then, also.
You can't make this stuff up.
The senior center.
Oh, God.
They are, they have started their traffic counts. They are still working on the lighting. The latest philosophy seems to be, the, the lights in the parking lot don't, don't have dimming capability. But they are looking into that, they are looking into that. But the police department are the ones who want to have lighting so that they can have security. The latest philosophy seems to be that if they dim the porch lights, you know, the, the, under the portico and stuff, that will be sufficient for the police department, because the cameras will operate, and they'll be able to get the footage that they need. Would that be okay with the board if they don't have parking lot dimming lights? If they are able to come up with a solution that's satisfactory to the police department that involves?
Well, what about the neighbors? Isn't that the other issue? I think that was the primary issue.
Yeah, it was the neighbors.
The neighbors, but no, the police, the police need to have security lighting.
Yeah, but they could, they could do every other light, or they could dim those lights too, right?
Well, they're saying that they think they have enough light, the parking lot lights stay on till nine o'clock, when theoretically, most programming will be over, so.
So then the parking lot lights go out.
Right, then they go out. So, the police department is saying that they would, they would have enough, they're still testing and everything, but they would have enough if they dim the portico, if they dim the lights. So, would that be an acceptable compromise to?
One thing was that the neighbors were complaining about that, weren't they?
Like that was part of them, yeah, but.
Is it, is it something the neighbors are, like, okay with? Do you know?
They're still working, they're still working on getting the solution, and the neighbors, um, the ne, we should be kind of out of it at this point. And so, they, the neighbors have been.
Well, I think we just want to enforce what we expected to have happen there.
Right, and so that's why we're trying to, they're investigating a couple compromised positions that will, you know, and they're just trying to figure out what's going to work best for everybody. And it may mean that the lights going off at nine and having the dimming stuff, it really is the best solution. I just, would, I mean, would you be amenable to something like that?
Yeah, I think it, as long as it meets the intent here, right?
The public safety building itself is really dark at night, it's really, in that parking lot, it's really dark. And they don't, and that's where they live, and they don't seem to have a problem with that. I mean, I, I'm amenable as always to lights go off, but the whole issue about them not being dimmed and being so bright initially, it's just kind of, it doesn't, never made any sense to me that they could not make the same approval that they made for the public safety, just.
They're looking into it, is what I've been told at the moment.
If you want to see lighting at night, look at the Hadley roadside of Toll Brothers.
Oh, yeah, that's like a Christmas tree.
It's unbelievable the lights over there. Absolutely unbelievable. And who's paying for the sidewalk on First Parish Road, where'd that come from?
The town is putting it in.
At the senior center, you mean?
Yep, and they're also putting it in along the church side, too.
That's a good improvement for that.
Because they have to cross the street, yeah, yeah.
Who's going to, who's going to keep people from making a left turn coming out of that parking lot? I go by there.
Yeah.
Every third time I see somebody make a left turn right there.
Well, and so they, they maintain that it's not people who are using the senior center.
How hard is it to read the sign that says right turn only, right?
I, I don't know how.
Trespassers, who's that?
You know what I think they need to do? Is that little triangular curb they have there, it's too low.
Yeah, well, that's been a topic of conversation as well, they, it doesn't match what was approved by the planning board.
It should be a full granite curb there, people have a hard time making a left turn.
Spikes in it.
And it's already crumbled.
There you go.
But it was always meant to be, it was slope granite curb, so that it's mountable by the fire truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's already collapsed.
But, but it.
It facilitates a left-hand turn.
But, but they don't know, they, it was cracking, because people were driving over it too much.
To make a left-hand turn.
Taking a left-hand turn, who were not using the senior center, they were just there.
Right, they were not using.
Just there.
It must be the people at the food pantry.
So, I'm just, you know, I'll keep you updated as I find out more information, but, I mean, it's still being investigated, I want, you know, I wanted to get some initial feedback.
And they're starting to serve lunch shortly.
Yes.
Yes.
So I hear.
But they've started the traffic study now?
Yeah.
They have started that?
Yes, they've started, yeah.
They have volunteers tracking down the traffic. And then there was, do you want to talk about that Form A?
No, because it's not submitted.
Okay.
No.
It's not submitted.
No. All right, there.
Is there anything else, my dear?
Um, not unless you have any other questions, me.
No.
All set.
I think we're all set. Anything from anybody? Thank you very much. I'll introduce a motion. Would you? Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.